So, welcome to the meeting of the Environment Committee. We have members of the public here who wish to speak. And so first to speak, we've got Mark Saving and Lorraine Nichols. I don't know which order you wish to speak, but it's just a big mark. Okay, so please go ahead.
Well, so first of all, it's really looking for an update from the Council. Myself and Lorraine came to bring back a couple of words back now with reference to the pollution on the A421, especially around the Ebert Way, Tindred Road, Tesco Roundabout area. I understand because after watching your last YouTube meeting, it's kind of, so questions I'd like to ask. Have Buckinghamshire Council officially met members to discuss the uplift of the A421? Because there was a mention of, um, things happening with the 421. So that's my first question. Have the town councils had problems with section 106 in regards to 420 houses in the Gorken Fields? Because that's basically is that an indication on what's happened on that stretch of 421? So obviously, in light of these challenges, I understand that the council are working on doing a plan. So will this be implemented into the, first of all? And so what I'm asking, will the members be seeking to move it by a pass to the outskirts? It's likely with rather than support of possible children in the road? Because obviously you're removing green infrastructure and bringing up the pollution close to the properties along that stretch of road. I suppose a good representation of how I see it, the, um, what happened in the county was Berryfields. The Avebury, Mr. Rowan, the Berryfield was all built. They built a new road on the outskirts of Avebury, then outskirts, Avebury to get back off the A421. And so then also can we assess that the monitoring is carried out between the Tindred Road and Tesco Roundabouts? That's really where we are. Because again, over the weekend, there's few accidents along that road as well. As I walked along towards the Tesco Roundabout, it begins to worry about two cars, two cars flying away. Obviously, that decided wasn't going that way just before the, um, road to the, yeah. And cars are doing far more than the 40 mile an hour anyway. And going back to also the state of the road, the particles seem to be getting worse. The noise from the lorries, it seems, it's more of, I don't know whether it's diversions. It's just nonstop. And again, just with the, I think when there's a claim on the Monday or Tuesday. So there is pollution, vegetation isn't helping it back. And so we just want to know where, first of all, might the town councils see where we are with it? And where we go with, obviously, the county council. Thank you.
I'll charge some of it. I have seen the drafts as a Buckinghamshire Council, section one of it. I don't think that has been made public. And I don't think they've agreed the section 106 agreement. So I believe there's a draft negotiation going on on the section 1062. I'm not aware that that's been made public in any way, because the officers are still working on it. The, I wrote to the officer fairly recently, asking again when they were going to consult Buckingham Town Council correctly on the A421 uplift, because initially, I was able to get information with cooperation with town clerk to approve his meeting, so that members were able to be informed, because I was very uncomfortable being a Buckinghamshire councillor with information which effectively would affect the town. The, I'm glad you brought up the Berryfields thing, because I think that's something that Buckingham neighborhood plan needs to look at. And that, they met the other day and did discuss briefly, Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, because he was at the meeting, um, did discuss briefly the implications of this road in broad terms. What they haven't done is given us a route. What they haven't done is given us a defined funding stream for this. What they have said is it's going to be looked at. So all those things are true. And as for the consultation on the pollution, which we corresponded on some months ago, I'm waiting for the right opportunity to bring it back into play, because clearly, it's a consideration with all change being proposed. Now, all those things are not answers, but that's where I believe it's set, it sits. If Anthony's memory of that meeting is different to mine, you'll correct me. And if, and if he goes there on the section 106, it would be something different to what, I don't believe it's in common circulation.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, as far as I understand, drop this, but it sits in public, yeah. We did write, I did write the House of Council, Buckinghamshire Council about pollution, haven't got a response back to that. We do, well, so can make that, it'll be public. The neighborhood plan, our, the council will be considering next week a time scale for neighborhood plan. Hopefully, it will be about 18 months process to get it in the revised version place. And that will early on, I would imagine the autumn involves some public discussions about what that means in terms of transport, bypass and highways, although our highway is very much responsible to Buckinghamshire Council. So the town council might take a position and advocate what we want, but that doesn't, that's all right.
Anybody else have anything to add or questions to ask? So.
Yes, so going back, would the town council be looking to sort of see if they can get any monitoring done prior to this? Or is it, that's where we're saying where we need to be, we need to be looking at?
That's why we're going to ask, if they want to.
Because I mean, obviously, we've looked at monitoring probably in the previous meeting. And I think the last actual monitor was in 2019, for the 421, 413, 422. Yes, they've been monitoring in town, but that's not where all the traffic is. And 421, and the traffic is, I mean, even walking up to the peak time at Tesco Roundabout, it stops because it's traffic all over the place. Yeah, it's just the amount of traffic that's gone worse.
Dean, just on the, you, I suspect, and you've read that the legal responsibility to monitor pollution at the council. So they do have a responsibility to monitor pollution and 2019 to now. And the report which you cite, I've seen, and it definitely states that they did testing in the town centre, which they didn't actually test bypass, even from Lincoln Village to, um, to pass midway on to anywhere. So, but they didn't give a very satisfactory response. I think I made that available to the planning committee in the town clerk, that's correspondence. But we do, we do need to go back to them, but I'm hoping that we can bring all the things into play in one, because they are all linked. And, and if, if it moves, that would resolve part of this pollution problem, irrespective of whether they test it or not.
Just like to say that with, with the new estate, obviously, yes, it's gone through, that has been granted. But I would, the road movements that I were talking about, I think there's about 820 road movements, 460 houses, well, that's rubbish, absolute rubbish. And also with the very back to that monitoring, very good, because the last monitor I did in town, that would be in 2020, when it was in lockdown. So the figures are skewed.
Yeah, thank you. And then Lisa.
Just to say, as on our action list, point 27, pollution. So I spoke to Buckinghamshire Council to conduct a new survey into the levels of noise, air pollution and particulates, particularly on the A421 and furnished Buckingham Town Council with the results of all previous surveys on record and what steps it is taking to deal with any unsafe levels of pollution. The town clerk has written and is waiting response, so it's ongoing on our action list.
Lisa, thank you. Just to say the new estate, we all opposed that it was shy councillors who, in their infinite wisdom, decided that this estate could be on what we cast as employment area, this business park. So, yeah, and your, the movements, the car journeys, we pointed all this out to them. So, yeah, we did want it done.
Is there anything we can do about that? The event, that's it, Alice.
That's it, that is it.
I suppose it would improve the figures on the pollution.
Honestly, yeah. Well, I want to concur about the level of pollution, both the air pollution and noise is extreme. I live quite close by to the Tesco Roundabouts and the, the amount of traffic, the trucks, I can hear them from my bedroom throughout the night and also, I would imagine, boy racers. Because there's no traffic speed cameras or anything, boy racers, the sound has woken me up numerous occasions because they just have free rein and it's incredibly dangerous. You know, I personally like my kids walking along that path because it's, it is filthy. You know, my car is filthy as well really quickly because of all pollution, but the sound as well, it's, it's incredible. So it definitely needs to be looked into.
I think it doesn't have, you know, even like the Audi Roundabout, it is repaired, it's all fallen out already. Yeah, I know they did a good job on all the budgets, so really good job. But I don't know what else was going to take, isn't it?
It was put in in 2014, so it took quite a little while to happen. So, and the other one is supposed to have happened already, but it was due to happen on April the 3rd, but see, that didn't happen. And so, yeah.
So thank you for coming in and raising it. So since we've got members of the university here, I would suggest, if everybody's in agreement, that we move agenda point 10B forward and deal with that first.
Yes, after the public session.
After the public session, yeah, after the public session.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so in that case, I'm concluding the public session.
No, so now you are inviting members of the public from the university to speak now in that.
Oh, of course, yes, sorry, yeah, I'll get the hang of this eventually. So please do, do speak.
Thank you. My name is Katie and I am the president of the student union at the university. I basically come here to speak about my report that I submitted regarding the lighting in Charnos Park. I am really passionate about this issue and the lack of lighting, just because a handful of female students have come up to me time after time to say how unsafe and uncomfortable they feel walking from university in the evenings back to where they live on the other campus, Borton Park. And I know incidents of women being catcalled in the evenings and followed and stuff like that. And I, I myself can't do much without that help from the council. And I would just like any assistance in this. I don't know how else to go about it. I did suggest like floodlights, just any form to see if there was any, just lights so that if you were walking, you could see if anyone was behind you, just because the lighting now, the area that is lit is lit for a very short amount of time before you go into darkness again. So I was just wondering if any lights could be placed that, you know, if you did feel unsafe, you could look behind you and see if anyone was there. Or the area, I have the jungle gym, it's quite dark and there's no lighting there. So any light whatsoever, even if it's small ones, just to, just so that women do feel that they can see in the near distance. Anything like that.
Okay, thank you for raising this, Lisa.
Thank you. And just to say that the issue isn't restricted solely to females, because a lot of boys get attacked, a lot of men get attacked, just the same, they just don't often report it as often. So I think that's kind of relevant there. But we've also had this issue with Borton Park, because if a lot of people, they work late at night Tesco's, they'll use Borton Park to cut through if they live in the inner village. And we've had the same issues there with the paths not being lit. So it's something that we looked into in the past, certainly. But, yeah, it's a good report, thank you for sending it.
Thank you so much.
Following on, thank you for sending it. I think what we, we need to do is to ask Green Spaces manager to go and look at what the provision is applied, some of which are ours and which are other people's, and, and, and do a, just a short survey of what is, what's working and what isn't working, because you may not be aware that we've had no lights in the town centre along the parade in the town centre for some considerable, we had, they weren't there last Christmas and they haven't been there and we're still waiting for them to be prepared by Buckinghamshire Council. So the lack of light provision is not just in the parks, it's actually in the town centre. So I think that we should just ask for a report to come back on what's working, what isn't working, whether the type of lighting bulb would be changed or something can be done. Saying that you're going to put some more lights in, who isn't budget, so it would be deceiving you, that's wrong. But whether there's anything we can do in the interim which improves the situation. And I'm very sad that you experienced this and, and it's, it can't be, it's not nice for anyone who feels uncomfortable when you walk through somewhere, but I think it's any consolation in saying it. We are very fortunate that we are Buckingham and not other places where we got it. And could you do us the kind of mission check what light is on the university campus as well? To see that when the lighting gets from there, that there is additional lighting on the university campus, because the bridge between the two parks isn't ours and the lighting needs to be consistent. And that needs to, just looking at that and then come back to us when we've looked at it and maybe we have found a solution.
Okay, I just want to say thank you for coming in with my last words, but also is it solely our responsibility for lighting in the parks?
Within Charnos Park to certain section, and then it changes to a crystal flow along the river. So it actually looks like the same park.
Yeah.
And that's surprising, but it actually stops on the corner of the playing field there. So I'm often in contact with that council, though, I don't think so.
Could we possibly contact them, address this issue and see how they could help? Because I think it needs to be dealt with quite urgently and especially, say, in the summer holidays before the new university year starts and it's, you know, we get those shorter days again. Because, yeah, I don't think anyone would like to go through dark park at nights. It's not safe and Buckingham is a lot bigger with a lot more people. And I think we do share lots of similar issues as bigger towns now.
And one of the key issues is obviously the change throughout the year, when, when it gets dark. And obviously, the worst time of the year is during winter months, we've, so it's refined, 35, I can't even start.
But just respond to Green Spaces manager, Buckinghamshire Council have an obligation to maintain their lights. There's lots of lights not working in the town centre, haven't been working, there's lots of nights that aren't working, period. I would suggest that, if you, because you're reasonably safe doing it, be my guest and go up to the town centre and stand there and point at the lights missing, because I can provide you with the correspondence of how many times I've asked them in the past 18 months. And it's nice that you've come and given us an additional challenge, but 34th's always been, was a district and now it's Buckinghamshire Council. And I think that a bit of care from everybody wouldn't be a miss.
Lisa.
Thank you. I think there is a difference, though, walking through town where some of the shops are already lit to the park where it's, it's dark. But, yeah, I would go along with what Robin suggested and see if Lee can do, through maybe the suggestions or in the report, the low level, like posts, if, if any of those could be added, solar power would.
Okay, so we seem to have seeped into.
Yes, shall we jump and start the meeting, then come back to that in a second, then we can talk about the other support?
Yeah, is that okay? So if we start the meeting of the Environment Committee now and I think we can now, shall we move straight into these reports rather than?
We need to get through the, we need to elect a chair in the morning.
Okay, fine, so we need to.
We'll go back to listen to that part of it.
Yeah, they can make a decision.
Yes, okay, so we do need to elect a chair to the meeting, yes.
Can I propose your good self?
And I'll second that.
Lisa, I've heard that.
I have no objection, so I think we need to vote, vote on it.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. I hope to be worthy of your confidence. And then election of a vice chair, do we have any of the rules?
No idea.
I, I was contacted and asked by councillor Willie, to say that, say that he wanted to be vice chair. Can I make an amendment that I propose, we propose and second it, but because he isn't here today, and it seems wrong to vote someone to be a vice chair who isn't present.
But he's.
But he did contact me and ask me whether I consider him and I, and he contacted.
He contacted me as well.
So, so I'm not, I'm not dreaming that up then, it's, so I, I can oppose him.
I mean, just, just to comment that it is quite in order to elect someone in their absence, so if that's what you want to do.
That's what I was.
Especially given that he's willing.
Yeah, so I'm proposing.
I'll second.
Okay, so can we vote on this?
That's unanimous.
Councillor Willie, who was duly elected.
We give an email in tomorrow and tell him that he wasn't here, but we elected him with his absence. And tell him if he didn't want to do it, he should come.
Now, we have to do it, he said to three different people to do it, so I think we're okay with it. So we need to take apologies for absence as well, yes, so apologies for absence, please. Okay, thank you.
I would accept an apology too.
Yeah, great.
Yes. Declarations of interest? Okay, now, now to receive the minutes, to remind everybody that we are merely receiving these, not discussing them.
If Green's accurate record.
Agreeing that they are an accurate record, so obviously, if you find anything in them that's inaccurate, please speak up now.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay, agreed, right. And now I think we are going to move, as I said, I'll get the hang of this eventually.
You'll be fine, honestly, you don't weigh off.
To point 10B and that is the issue of the lighting in Charnos Park that we have just received your report on. And I would ask the state manager, Lee, to give us his report on this.
Yeah, thank you for the information being provided, the points that I've made on it. We did, we replaced the heads on the street lighting down there and I've just appointed electricians to come and service and maintain the lights.
So can you just, just clarify that in terms of the lights that we're talking about? So the town council, this we walk through, so the town council responsible for the lights along here and then along here, so those are the lights that we, that we're talking about, whereas the lights in this direction of Buckinghamshire Council.
Well, actually, two going, so our land stops on the corner of the football pitch.
Okay, there, so we're responsible.
So there's nine, we've got nine lights in total. Yeah, so we're just about to get them all serviced. I know there is one, at least one, 40 minutes on all the time, so the sensors on top, most likely need replacing. So at the time, we're getting all serviced and cleaned as well, so it'll be a bit brighter. And we would tend to do that on a yearly basis and get them repaired whenever we need to as well. And so, yeah, as I said, we replaced them not so long ago with LED low voltage and the, the lighting was designed so that it would be bright enough, but it would went down straight at the half beneath to try and cut down the light pollution, basically. The lights we had before was glowing things that just shot the light everywhere, but wouldn't see that bright. And if, if there is a good areas where you think it's a problem on the path, we'd be glad to take it, take a closer look at that as well. But one of your suggestions was lighting up, I think, the play area that's set away, away from the park there separately. I don't think that would be a typically good idea and I think it might actually encourage a bit more antisocial behaviour if that area was lit up at night. You could encourage people to come and use the play area, but obviously at night, permission be there. And you've also got issues of some of the houses on Charnos Road overlook that area. So I think that may be causing more the problem than it may be solving. So I'm happy to look at the lighting actually on the park a bit closer. And then if it is any issues further on down Chris Nichols Walk, so I know we reported some right at far end by the footbridge that weren't working, so that's council. And that was a few months ago now, so if there's anything wrong there, let us know. And there was one as well, which is leaning over, I noticed about a month so ago, that I reported previously and so I'm in fix. So, but, yeah, but, yeah, please let us know if there's any, any, any issues on.
Yeah, okay, so I've got, we've seen Robin, but Kate, Katie, isn't it, yeah? Are we happy to suspend standing order to get Katie's opinion, please?
Um, I just wanted to say that I, I did highlight as, when people have said that that, they feel the most dangerous is the playground area. And you said that lights might more attract, might attract more antisocial behaviour. There are already loads of teenagers in that children at night doing things that they shouldn't be doing. I don't believe that lights will enhance this, like, if they're already doing it without the lights. And, you know, the students have said that that's where the most fearful of attackers coming from, that area, because it's so dark. So that is, I'll concern the most dangerous area.
Thank you. Thank you. And I know that the suggestion, the suggestion of doing the paths, I think that's more doable than the play area because I know that's what is of most concern, but we have had through the years where play areas have been lit. And the first thing is we get residents complaints all day long, that's where they live, they don't, kids don't at night. And, yeah, they are going to be there at night, it doesn't, it could be filled in middle of nowhere, they'll go there. And I don't think that will ever stop, whether it's lit up or not. But I think the paths are the things that are of most concern. So if we can, now that we're in proper meeting meeting, if we can ask the Green Spaces manager to look at the paths. And also, could I just ask, Lee, what, what are your thoughts on the low, the low ones that are in the picture?
I think the tool, the street lights will work better to cover a bigger area. You need more of the bollards and the bollards need to be so well made, so they're not vandalised as well. They have to be absolutely, sort of concrete, so they're not damaged all the time.
That's what I was worried about with vandalism. All right, thank you, thank you, Sharon.
We haven't, to the rest of my knowledge, received any letters from the residents of Charnos Park, who, most of the residents of Charnos Park lived there, had a long time. If they thought there was something going on back their gardens, we would have had a complaint about that. One of the dangers of being young, have been young a long time ago, is wherever you are, you're in the wrong. And whatever you do, and you're in the wrong for it, and you moved on repeatedly. So if they're doing something wrong, well, obviously, it needs stressing. But I think that if we lit that area, we would then have a situation that the residents of Charnos Road would ask why we're illuminating their front rooms with a light where it is before and what we've done it for and how to be, do that, because, and also, we would really need to speak to, to find out whether there's any evidence that they're asking, anything happened there which is wrong, whatever. We should never take it on, I think they're doing something wrong, because they might just be being young and noisy and oestrus, which happens. And so if there is a police statement saying something, they come to us also. And so if there is a police statement saying something, they come to us also. We do tend periodically to move our CCTV camera around, um, town. And it, it sometimes it's in different places, sometimes it's there. So if there is any evidence of something, um, within that CCTV footage, it would, would appear. And the police have access to CCTV anyway. But I think if we go away and do a report, come back to where it is, but there is a danger that, um. If we illuminate the play area, uh, I think it is quite reasonable that if you light an area, um, you know, like that film, if you, if you put, if you light it, it will come. Um, will be creating an area where people will gather. And, um, and you might find that there's more people there than there were before, because they've got a light to sit under. And, um, but also, as I said earlier, it'd be nice to know what the university is doing on their side, the campus. Um, as they've got a responsibility to you as a student, that I've never thought it was very well lit for the bridge back to the, um. The university buildings particularly well lit, and, um, and they have a, as a student, should, you know, I think I would push them as well. So you're pushing everybody equally, um, and that should be your job on the student unit, to make sure the university is doing what they can do.
Lisa, one other point. Thank you, and can I ask you Jane, um, is the, is the university doing anything on personal safety? And, um, you know, kind of safeguarding, because it isn't nice to feel unsafe. Um, it's, I don't worry too much about it, because I've come from London, so it, kids gathering doesn't bother me at all, but I can see how it would. So at the school doing anything, you know, personal safety wise?
I just wanted to say that we, um, since I've been coming into post, I have managed to light up the university grounds more.
Well done.
Um, what they were, just because obviously this is the show I was passionate about. Um, so we've got lights all over the bridge, going into the things and in the car park, um, on the university campus. I run, um, these events called Girls Night In, where I get feedback and stuff on how we can help students. And so far, we seem to be in contact with Rachel and Matthew, the Safety Community Officer, who helped us. Um, helped me try and understand how we can make students feel safer, um, alarms and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Um, which we want to introduce just to any students who feel they may need and stuff like that. Uh, we also have a detailed report support where they, students can log any issues anonymously or their name. That if they feel they want to address situations like this, they can. So I, I am trying my best to nail it as much as I can.
Sure you're doing a good job, yeah.
Robina.
Uh, I just wanted to ask, is there any form of deterrents we could have, say, around the, um, you know, the, the play area, which we can't illuminate? So there's signs that say CCTV present here or something like that?
We have that signage, so the moment the toilets have got fixed, CCTV cameras on, the signage there.
Yeah.
Um, at the moment, we don't have any, anyone to look at.
Possibly, whether it's there or not, but sometimes signs are a deterrent or, you know, the way sometimes people have those, uh, false. Burger alarms in front of their houses with the lights coming on, if we had something like that. Um, and also I think, you know, you're doing such great work. If you were to do like a big social media campaign that we could back, you know, because safety, especially of young girls, is really important. For young boys as well, but obviously girls feel all alone, walking alone at night in the dark. So I would hundred percent back that and, you know, push it forward, help you in any way that you'd like. So, um, yeah, so carry on the great work and I think we should, we should put our heads together and find some solutions to this problem. And try and help, um, you know, students feel safer. You know what?
Robyn.
Well firstly, thank you, you didn't come back when I said the university, if you pushed there, I wish you'd come back then. And said that you'd actually got them to do that, credit to you. Um, because historically it wasn't very well lit there, and that means you'd made an improvement, and you should take all credit for that. Because I always thought it was a big start there. I don't spend a lot of time in the parks at night, surprisingly enough.
Not these days.
Not these days. It's not somewhere I would, um, prequen at night, to be honest, and, uh, unless I was making my migration route from the Mitre. Um, back home, but I wouldn't even go through there then. Um, but, um, but I do think it's good what you've done. If you could just, um, include us in anything you do, because it, I'd like it to be together rather than against each other in all this. And, and if you would be kind enough to include the whole community in it, in the town centre and everywhere else. Because I've got a gentleman who's disabled, who, who constantly has been asking to have that illuminated along, um, along the parade. Um, where Mr Dan Scabadlan is for quite a number of years. He also, um, constantly, because he goes home on a wheelchair up to May's Morton from work, and he works every night at Tesco's. And he goes home on his own, and, and, and he's been trying, he had no luck in getting anyone to respond to him. At least I've got a response saying they're going to help them. Um, but I think we need to make sure by next winter, people can actually move around safely in the town and not get through. It was better when the Christmas lights were, because at least they actually illuminated the town. Um, but it's not just there, it's the whole town.
Okay, so. Thank you very much, everybody. Are there any new points to be made? I think Lee has written down, yeah, Paul.
So just to clarify, we, so we will come back and then have a report on other lighting options.
Yeah.
Um, and the next meeting is on the. October September.
Hmm, but it is getting dark. So thank you very much for coming and, and raising this, it's clearly a very, it is a very important issue. So we'll see what joint we can do. Thank you very much. And then we come to point number six on the agenda, the action report. To receive the report and note the updated information. And, um, is there any updated information that the officers need to bring to our attention? Are there any, yes, Lisa?
Thank you, um, we can take off the number twenty one on page eight of forty seven, because it's completed now, the, um, the fixation.
Yes. Yeah, we can take that off next time. Okay. Oh, Robyn, sorry.
Item three, it's straightforward after, um, still working on it, I expect. Um, the cemetery purchase, um, I suspect what the town clerk's going to say is to contact with the solicitors.
Yes. Well, this is different, purchased the land.
Yes.
Uh, so in terms of purchasing the land, which we instructed our solicitor to commit, commit twenty twenty one. Um, two, three weeks ago, we did have a meeting as a solicitor and reviewed the land transfer document. Which is almost complete, but our solicitor is just completing checks on the covenants. Because the document provided by the seller that comes up with the land registry check basically covers all the land owned by the seller. Which covers a large number of fields, so our solicitor is happy to go through in some detail. But we're ninety ninety sure that none of that actually reflects this land. So things have moved on, have a transfer document, and I'm sure that sale will be happening in the next few months to completion. Which isn't quite what I'd hope to say, but it's better than my fear I'm asking.
That's good, because we do need to, um, be long with it, it was, um, agreed, the town clerk knows in the new council. And of course, it's got a long lit near five months of a planning application waiting to be determined before we get to that sort of stuff, yeah. Thank you for that.
Thank you. So in that case, we move on to agenda point number seven, budgets to receive the latest figures. Town clerk, can I say anything on this, yes, Lisa?
Thank you, um, just wondered what roundabouts have no advertising on them at the moment? Do we have any that are not being advertised on?
There's all advertising at the moment, uh, but we are in discussions with one that may come to that soon. Uh, there's a waiting list of two.
That's good. I'm really pleased to hear that, thanks, Lee, for doing that, yeah, yeah.
I'm going to thank the, um, officers for getting them, um, right now, it, it can be directed to my breakfast this morning, one of them. And, um, which was very useful, and as I went around the roundabout reminding me I could get breakfast there, so I went there this morning. Um, but, you know, i- i- it's good to have them all up and running, because for the minutes, it's well worth remembering that when we first started actually taking these roundabouts on. Many, many years ago, it was councillor Rupert Neil wanted us to take roundabouts on. At that time, Buckinghamshire County Council didn't actually, um, want to manage any of the roundabouts in Buckingham. And it was councillor Neil who actually suggested that we took the roundabouts on and actually charged them and maintained them. And since then, Buckinghamshire Council realised they can earn an income out of them and haven't offered us any additional roundabouts since then. Um, and I think that successive people who managed our roundabouts, and I think the boys do, and the staff do a really good job of it, and I think we should commend them.
Thank you, okay, yeah, thank you.
So just drawing attention to two or three points, one, one is, uh, you've noticed that the cemetery rates have gone up quite a lot. I still don't know what, why that is, and hopefully in the next week or so, we'll get hold the right person, fucking sure, work that out. I suspect it's because it's been done without referring back to the work done last time, they were revalued, which was done in some detail. Although, obviously once you've got new cemetery that. I say two things first, yeah? So one, one is that, um, what doesn't yet show up here is that fuel has gone up quite a lot, so. A, when we don't be able to use red diesel, that's quite a cost up, but as you know, fuel costs are also going up as well. So I'd anticipate we're going to be spending that in the year. And the same thing for utility costs generally, we did a budget, a massive increase in utility costs. So that will hit us, we are looking to renegotiate that. At all optimistic about that process for us. So it's early in the year, we'll keep reporting back as you can talk.
Yeah, so thank you for inviting us, and I'm sure everybody else is in the same situation. Robyn.
Can I just ask for you, Karen, that we do check the, the, what they're basing the area of land on. I have, I have a concern that the rates may have on it, because we have to extend the cemetery. Um, we've extended the burial space in the cemetery. That, as long as that hasn't actually increased the rate, but the reason we have to extend the burial base in the cemetery, because they failed to give us, um. A planning application on the other cemetery, which meant that we had to spend money on our current cemetery. Whether that's contracted tension, because effectively the cemetery is slightly larger than it was before, not quite a lot. But whether that's actually, because I think we have a really good argument with them, that the reason we're paying more rates is because they wouldn't get on and have to determine our planning application in five years. And I'll enjoy that one.
Um, I'm not aware that we've recently completely provided details on the cemetery to them, so we haven't informed Buckinghamshire Council. How many changes to the cemetery in terms of rates, so I don't think that would be the case. Um, and also last time we did it, so last time, my previous, I made the calculation, Lee. Actually, it took account of how many grave spaces were left in the cemetery. So even with what we've done, I don't think there are more grave spaces left now.
So it's not.
So I don't think that's the issue, but I don't know what the issue actually is, so.
Okay, so it's probably a mystery to can't solve tonight.
But by September, it will be.
Yeah. We will get, uh, this will be back on the agenda and we will go on, and we will hopefully have a clearer picture then. In that case, we move on to the compliments and complaints log. And we have already noticed that we need one new category in there, which is suggestions, because we have one which is not really a. Uh, complaint or a compliment, but a request to list the height of the height restricted car park entries on the website. And I think other than this, what do we do with these? We just not? Yeah, okay, so we're not them?
Definitely not.
And then we come on to point number nine, which is the railway walk. And I think this is for Lee to just update us on.
This was, yeah, thanks, I just want to update you on a, uh, issue, we've got halfway along our section of the railway walk. Um, there is a slightly dipped area of the concrete path, uh, which has been suffering with the wet, sort of boggy area. Um, so just a bit, just to make everyone aware what's going on and what we're planning to do. Um, I was hoping to plan to do it last summer, but the area unfortunately didn't dry out at all this summer. So I'm hoping that this summer it will, so I can actually get in there, dig a small channel. Just try and drop the water table slightly in that area, it'll be drying away. Um, if that doesn't solve it, uh, I will come back for the solutions. Service job to try and fix this.
Okay, thank you, Robyn.
Thank you, Natalie, because it has been an ongoing, um, situation. And some of the thing, I think, is because the worms have raised the height of the soil on the, on the other ground. Because what they do is they keep making soil, and, and, and since we have the pathway there, the path is now lower than the, than the earth. But just on that situation, those who might have been included or concerned, a gentleman contacted me from, um. The new estate about the scenic walk, and I was advised that the drainage and issue on scenic walk. Uh, adjacent to, um, the land which we're considering, um, and looking at, which is, um, some rumble. They've gone and put the drainage right, because there was a flood along there, and people couldn't get along it to school. So I was advised by three officers, one after the other, but it had been done, so that must be right, because three people have told me it's been done. Um, um, so, um, we made a little bit of fuss about it, because it was basically, you know, the area, we've all seen it. It, it, it's where the spring works, and it doesn't, doesn't drain away. So, um, thankfully it's, it's clear, which is, because it's, it's a springy ground, very much like this is springy ground here. There's a strong spring there somewhere, because that's what fills up the pond. So, um, which, you know, and, um, we shouldn't be surprised, but hopefully it will, thank you, Lee, for doing it. I look forward to not having to walk around it.
So, uh, I think that concludes that item.
Uh, I was just going to ask, Lee, you suggested a couple of different ways of mitigating that. Do you have a, a preferred one yourself?
The boardwalk would be fantastic, um, it's just the price is.
Yeah.
Putting, it wants to do the length of the, the area that needs sorting out.
Hmm.
Um, there will be a price for the concrete alternatives, prices like that. But as long as they last, I think both solutions will last.
Sure.
Thanks, thank you. And then we come to, uh, point ten point eight, Chandos Park, and this is the public art in the Chandos Park. We have a report from Nina, uh, I wonder, Nina, did you want to say anything about it?
Uh, well, the majority really is, is in the report. Can you hear me all right? No.
Let me see what we can do.
We'd heard people before.
Not, not this meeting, no.
Try again, Nina.
Can you hear me now? I was yellow, but you just can't see me, okay? Um, so, so it's mainly, it's all in the report, um, it's, it's basically, it stems from the, um. Culture and Art Strategy, which we, which originated from EDWG, our Economic Development Working Group. Um, was most recently discussed at TCNE last week. Um, it, the development of a, um, sculpture trail, this being the first piece in a sculpture trail. Really is the precursor to a strategy, um, and it feeds off the popularity of the La Seal Coordinator's fantastic art, Otter Art Trail. Um, that was so popular with visitor, visitors to Buckingham and residents of Buckingham over the last couple of years. Um, it, it helped drive, drive footfall to parts of the town. Um, and that's something that actually, uh, locating something that is slightly more permanent in Chandos Park would hope to do. So bring people into town, through town, into other areas that perhaps they may not have visited previously. Um, the rest of it really is in the report. Obviously, members have been also provided with a briefing note that goes into a little bit more depth about, um, a local artist that we've identified. That could provide something that's fitting with. a local artist that we've identified that could provide something that's fitting within the budget. So happy to take any questions or go into confidential if that's appropriate.
Lisa.
Thank you. Is it, is it the Swan thing that we're talking about?
No, no, so it's separate, separate to that. So the Swan Trail is sort of mark two of the Otters Trail.
Yeah.
So that would be a temporary installation, similar to the Otters, that would be sort of fiberglass sculptures around town. This is a permanent installation. So if you think about public art in Buckingham, we've actually only got two key pieces of public art in Buckingham. The Otters, the wooden otters, and the Swan Girl by the Old Jail.
So do we know what this is going to be? Do we, do we have any pictures in it?
No. So no, there, there isn't when, there's sort of different approaches that you can take when commissioning these sorts of things. But it's best not to be too prescriptive about exactly what it's going to be. But certainly we would, our recommendation is that we would form some sort of a working group to come up with ideas. So in the report, it says something that reflects perhaps environmental or kind of cultural themes within Buckingham. Something that's reflective of its place and its location as well in Chandos Park. Obviously, there's the old milk factory, dairy factory that used to be there. There's the river, there's the wildlife aspect. There's quite a lot to draw on from that area. And the local artist in particular, and I've referenced some other pieces, you know, that they've worked on, is very good at kind of drawing on those key themes and then reflecting them through their work.
All right, I just, it is a lot of money, so, you know, yeah. All right, thank you, Nina.
Do we get to know which artists it is, so remember about the back castle?
Yeah, did you receive the briefing note that I emailed?
Melanie.
Melanie, isn't it?
Yeah.
And if I could just add to that, so we sent a briefing note around with the artist details. If members weren't happy with that artist or examples, we can use different artists for it. So the kind of, the fundamental question is, are we happy to go with a sculpture possibly like that one? And to bid the community board on that basis. And obviously it would be a process of discussion about exactly what it was.
When did you send that round?
Is it last week?
I've got it on.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we do need more public art. I think we do need more public art. I don't think it's not a lot of money if we get it from them, if we're gonna part fund it with the community board possess. It might, we may, we have to get anything out of them, we're probably gonna have to part fund what it is now, so.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's for it.
But can we differentiate between what committees do? Because the culture and art strategy has only just been agreed that we go to a cultural art strategy and the recommendation was only just agreed at the last events committee, which would go to council to agree that we do have a cultural art strategy, because it was in the minutes, which I just agreed. It said recommend that we have a cultural art strategy because that's how it came to us. So, so that meant that when we did the cultural art strategy, that would include, which events have agreed to look at, that would include include things what Nina's working on. It would also include what we would want for, the way we would want the town to look, the way we want to see what the town did in the future. When we were art sensitive, we want that. Now, we're gonna go out to consultation, that's it. It might be worth that we have a cross officer conversation around where we are with that, because I'm quite happy using culture and art strategy in two committees. One's made a recommendation, one's got town centre and event. But I think what we do need to decide is who's gonna do it.
Oh, committee.
Yeah, because, you know, it started in events and eventually will probably drift to, when it comes to the drifted, it'll probably end up eventually with the planning and town plan committee to actually put it into the town plan. But I think what we agreed was to go out and do some consultation on it, probably during the fringe. And, and I think this, this sculpture, whether Nina would say not, that this would be a good opportunity to do some consultation about doing art sculpture at the same time, because people are going to be coming to events. And if you organise a, an event for people to come to, they won't come to it. But if you ask them for something about what you want, the culture and art and questions, they put it in a box when they come into it. And then you haven't got to organise another event and you haven't got to turn offices out to a new event, they're already there. So I think we need to agree in offices meeting around how we're gonna do that, if this fits in with it, I think. And we do need to, we go and purchase public art, the third thing that someone will say is why have you purchased public art? That we've got something else you need to spend the money on. The natural fact, if you look at, no, we wouldn't have had the Swan Girl, we wouldn't have had the Swan down by the river. And the people who put the artwork on the bridge, on the London Road, wouldn't have put artwork on the bridge, you know, the crest if they'd have took that opinion. And so it is long overdue that we had artwork in Buckingham per se. Because we are dirt of it. We did look at it some years ago and it just ran into the sand because it got done at precept basically. Many years ago we looked at, even got a sculpture from Brit at the time, to come, and to look at a project and it's just running to the ground. They're going to cough up to a precept in the end.
So I think everybody sees some agreement that sculpture is generally a good idea, not discussing that. I don't think it's for members to decide when officers have meetings. I think that's my decision. Well, that's what he said. And TCNE said, agreed, agreed a lot about a year ago, and full council agreed to have a cultural strategy. Well, TCNE agreed their last meeting was to put together a plan to make it happen.
Yeah.
The reason we thought we'd bring this forward now would be to try and access community board funding this year towards it. Whereas if we wait for the strategy to be agreed, we might miss the opportunity this financial year. Whereas if we do go ahead with a sculpture trail, then it's gonna be something we're doing, gradually over some years. So the idea was to let's try and get off the ground with piece number one now, and at the same time as the cultural strategy. Yes, if we consult on it through TC and the fringe, that'd be really good.
I agree with what Amy said. Makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay, so do we vote, do we need to vote on this? Do we have an agreement? What are we agreeing on? Sorry, that's a recommendation, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're agreeing to receive name and support.
And then if we do receive money from the community board, then what exactly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Match funded, I think that is.
But then that specific decision request come back to the committee if you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with all three recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Robin.
I think we need to be, we're gonna match fund it. It's only fair to, officers have been arrived to the community board to say that we have to agree that we will match fund it. I think we also have to find a budget to agree that we can match fund it, because.
It's, it is, it's for me and my reserves and parks.
So it's gonna come out, so you tell me we haven't committed that to the outset.
Yeah, no, we can say, we believe this might be coming, so there is me and my reserve that is appropriate amounting already.
Okay, so as long as we agree in the minutes, that and that, so that when it goes to full council, we don't have to have a long discussion about where you spent money on this, where did it come from? So that it's there, so the chairman can defend it quite simply.
Okay, so have we formally agreed on this? Do we need?
Yes.
And I, I agree, yeah. Touching on this, that's agreed. Then we can, we've done 10B. I don't think we need to get, go over this again. So point 11. Borton Park, toddlers play area, we to receive and discuss a written report from the Estates Administrator.
Yeah, so Nina told a fantastic report about the Borton Park toddler player, which is.
I'm sorry, I should have invited Nina to speak to it.
So it's all been in an amazing report, but we want to look to apply to S26 to get the money to replace the player. There's certain issues that have come up recently. The main one is the surfacing. And if we get rid of the surfacing, it's quite prudent to look at the rest of the equipment there as well. And then on the side looking at other pieces as well, the main, main item in there is a multi plate, which has been there 22 years, I think, now without doubt. And some of the, although it's not condemnable, some of the ropes have started to wear through to the metal and it's come to the end of its life for a lot of other items. So we've been up getting rough budget prices from different suppliers or preferred suppliers. And we're just waiting for the price to come back. And then if it's agreed, we'll go to open application in S26 to find a replacement.
Okay.
Lisa. Thank you. And 3.2, so page 30 of 47. It says the junior play area, and then it says nursery classes from two primary schools and use it, and also the local nurseries are gonna be asked for their opinion. Is it the junior play area, the older play area that toddlers probably don't play on? I would have thought it'd be the toddler park we're talking about.
I think I'm sure that means toddler play area.
Can that be corrected then? Wait a minute. Thank you. That was all, it was just the question.
Thank you. Robin.
The, the area, I'm glad Nina's brought the report through, in fact, it's, it's long overdue. The service in that area has always been an issue in the sense that we've had situations where we've had to take trees down. We've had to have overgrowth hanging it and then it gets the green on it and then everything, whatever. When we're looking at this, putting in new equipment. And I, I, those, I think I saw those over the weekend, the proposals, they all look very entertaining, I'm just too big to use them. And if that was equipment, I loved it. It looked like if I was small, I'd get a lot of fun out of it. But are we too happy the service in there is gonna be okay when we put new equipment in? It's the last thing I want to find that we put it in there and then we've got to resurface it because it flooded and lifted, if you remember. And then we had problems with it going down because it's never been in the, it is in the flood zone. And as long as we don't put new stuff in there and then have to find new service for it.
Fran. And I think the, the report includes some surfacing to being, being replaced. Yeah, it's covered, it's covered, yeah, it is.
Yeah. So the last time it happened, we had the edging, we'd done proper curved, curved, concrete curved edging. Because on the bottom half, yeah, it does flood and it did lift it. And that hasn't been a problem this time. Other areas have failed and come away. But we're also looking at possibly reshaping slightly the area, the rubber sort of surfaced area. There's one area that's got some lock rolls in it, that I think is section of the concrete. And we're also looking in the design to possibly alter the shape slightly. To alter it, yeah, it would be considered.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I, I can't suppose this is 2.5. Yeah, it says that, look at the surface. Can we, just before we go and purchase that, make sure that the surface we put down can be attached? Because I don't want it to be, we, we've had a really bad flood in 2020. I don't want us to come back and find that, that the surface lifts again. I know you've done it right before we actually put it in. Just make sure it won't actually do that, because we'll just then have, have to shut it again. And then toddlers won't get in there. We had all that business, you know, children standing outside the gate. I remember children being stood, they're not allowed to get in and it's quite emotive, isn't it? People put it on social media and, and small child stood not getting in the play area, not good work, is it? So although it's in the report, can we have a note that, that we're assured that it won't lift? And I'm not assured that that tells me that it won't lift.
Noted. Lisa, thank you. It usually floods a little bit every year. It's, it's got progressively worse. It's not, it used to be like every couple of years it'd flood down there and it always floods a little bit. And then the senior play area as well. So I would have thought any surface that was gonna be put in there, that be for first and foremost, because it is right next to the river. So, yeah.
So if not at all, thank you for that. We then come to point number 12, the climate emergency plan to receive and discuss an updated version of the action plan. And this again comes from, from Nina. Nina, is there anything you would like to draw our attention to?
No, there's, there's, the only updates are updates that we're already discussing on the agenda, which is the community litter picking scheme. And I think as councillor Don, as you pointed out, the quick litter pick scheme that's been installed recently at Chandos Park. Everything else is in there.
Thank you. In that case, we can move on to point number 30, which I actually believe we may already have covered. The litter picking equipment and that it has been installed, but obviously there's some.
So here, this is what I mean, it's a slightly different scheme where we have a set of litter pickers.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's been distributed to various schools and been really successful. So Nina just reported back how well it's done.
Okay, yes, and I believe we have a, a press release in the making.
Going out tomorrow.
Going out tomorrow. Okay, yes. Robin and then Lisa.
There's, it's been asked about doing a press release, it's your chairman, the big chairman did. And but can we, 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 we keep, when we're doing this equipment in the park and where we're doing it, can we, as Nina goes about her job, I'm sure she'll find that the other areas in the community where these things might actually come in, like when the skate parks, but hopefully one day will be replaced. You never know. I mean, there's always a chance, isn't there, that we might have a skate park before, before, before 20, 2030 or something. Or that's the climate change in there, isn't it? So there's always a chance we'll get one. So we could sort of look at whether they want one there, because it's an area where litter is being picked, whether it would be a suitable place or not. Because maybe we should ask Buckinghamshire Council to consider having a similar scheme in there. Because it's not gonna delay them by looking at it, is it really? Because it's not happening, is it? And that would be the place for me, where you do get comments about litter and it goes off into the, into the state and the art. Does Nina think that's a silly place to have one or not?
I don't think it's a silly place to have it at all, no. Because as you say, it would be, it would be down to Buckinghamshire Council to, to pay and install for such thing. There have actually been on social media suggestions of one being installed near where the ducks are, near where Tros Car Park as well. It's quite a bit of litter which accumulates at the Verney Close Spiny, so that would also be a hotspot for it. But you can, you can collect the litter pickers from both Chandos Park and Borton Park and walk around the town centre. They're not just restricted to the areas in which the stations are located. Equally, equally, this initiative that we're discussing within the report, you know, there's sort of 30 litter pickers there. So, so groups who have contacted us since lockdown really, who are quite keen to, to do litter picks themselves. You know, they're, they're able to utilise this equipment for weeks at a time, even if it's just one or two of a group going out and sort of tackling a hotspot area. So I'd really ask that councillors within their own networks promote that we have this equipment here and that we're, we're happy to liaise with community groups to, to drop the equipment off and do kind of pickups for bags and that's such, such thing.
Thank you, that's a very useful update. Yeah, thank you, Sharon. I just wondered, oh, 3.4 on page 47 of 47, it says that the town council isn't liable for the repair or replacement of the equipment. So has it been made clear to the people that are using them that who is liable for them? If it's not us, then is it them? Or how does that, how does liability work? And is, is that made clear to everybody? So it is on the last, last one. 3.4 under information.
47 and 47.
So I could probably, so, so that's written within the guidance that we give to anyone that hires the equipment out, so which only one community group has hired the equipment so far. So that we are sort of saying, we're not, we're not guaranteeing that we're going to replace a litter picker if it is broken. We do have a stock of our own. We do have a stock of our own. Obviously, these, this equipment was kind of gifted to us. But that actual wording regarding personal injury and damage is written within the guidance that we give to any hires.
So we're gonna replace them if they get broken, is that right?
They're not replacing them if they get broken. If they get broken, they're broken.
Oh, because Nina said that we've got our own.
Yeah, we have.
We have our own stock.
Yeah, we have our own stock, but those 30, when they're broke, even when they're broken, then, you know, then there's only 29 once you break one.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Nina.
Yeah, Robin.
Well, we use them for our own events as well.
But not these 30?
No, but we use a different lot for our own events and start bringing them, like come after the bonfire.
Yeah, it was just these ones.
You know, that's where they are and they use them themselves. Get rid of those, then we'll provide some more for them.
Okay, and then point 14, access awareness, that is a point that we always have there. So I guess you can believe that, yes.
At town centre events, we discussed access in the town centre. And we're waiting for some correspondents to come back from transport for books about the state of the pavement and the trip assets and such and such, before we do a do anything further on it, I think that's what we agreed. But the, one of the things that we'll come through to here was about Giggicleer. And there was concerns raised about some of the areas of Giggicleer's work not being particularly level on the paths and the fact that whether that, we're waiting to see, maybe it goes to council, but it will come through because there's been concerns about Giggicleer's work being on pavements, just not being level. People come out and you get water and tracks. And it could be that it's something we're gonna have to monitor, but that will come forward as a recommendation. It could be that the committee won't take it forward. But it was a recommendation, it will be from the events committee to come back to here. So I don't know whether that'll go to council, come back here for next meeting, that's town plan. Where that, where that will go, where that'll go to council, then it's here, whether it will.
The TC, TC thing was about town centre, the state of town centre, so it makes sense, TC, everyone discussing that. Certainly generally, to the terms of highway versions, things that might affect town council, I think it's been very active.
If there's any, yeah, any issues, just keep your calls on them directly to CFP or myself and I will go to CFP. And get your clear up and go directly to them.
Members raised, made concerns about some of the standards in the parts of Buckingham, which without citing particular parts of Buckingham. So that might be something that comes back, that's chairman will look at it and decide how she sees it then.
I think that's too soon then.
It won't because it's town centre that we're looking at. It was the other areas which were parked and we were only looking at town centre area because it's in our remit, but the other areas were outside town centre, that's why we didn't look.
We'll note that. The next point is a standing point that we've now added, the update from representatives on outside bodies. Is there anything to report? And Buckingham Community Wildlife Project, I believe, has not met, so there wouldn't be anything to report either. News releases, I think that's the, we've covered the press release for that. Is there anything else that is about to be, yes, Robin?
Can I ask that the chairman and officers look at draft interest of these in advance over what work we're doing on lighting? Because I've got a feeling what we'll find is the university will do their own press release now about these matches. And I think that it's important that the chairman's able to be supported by the officers with the exact wording of what we're doing. Because the university runs its own media thing and it could be that we need to be sure that you've got the support, correct information to respond to them.
We get ahead of it, kind of thing.
Get ahead of it, because I'm not having you talk short with it, with it, because I think that's what will happen. And then the paper will come back to you saying, have you got a quote on it? And whatever you say has got to have a legal backing by the officers. Make sure we don't get caught.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, we'll notice that. We will keep an eye on it as soon as we think, oh, what we're doing, that we are prepared. Thanks, okay. Any other points on this one? Okay, so moving on to the chair's announcement, I haven't got any. So the date of the next meeting is Monday, the 12th of September.
Thank you very much, chairman.
Okay, so we're closing the open part of the meeting and are moving into the private part of the meeting.